On the special meeting, the Florence City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Mrs. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Wynn?
Here.
Mrs. Kimber?
Here.
Mrs. Wingo?
Here.
Mr. Osborne?
Here.
We have a forum.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the special meeting on May 9, 2023. You should have received those in your packets. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second. Ms. Kimper, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a presentation. I'll call on Victoria Riley, our community services coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. So I would like to share a special person that I came across with you, and she has a presentation for you tonight. Her name is Addison Donk. Addison is Miss Part of Burgundy Country, so that is part of the Miss America Pageant System. And one of our community partners reached out to me probably about six months ago and asked if the city, there's anything the city could do to kind of help out as another platform. She's Florence resident, and of course, I don't know it. So she's been hanging out with me for about six months. We've been doing some mentoring and some coaching, and she put together a presentation for you tonight to show you about her platform for the Miss Kentucky Pageant and what she did to benefit the city with us. I'd like to introduce you to Addison.
So thank you, guys, for allowing me to join today. Go ahead and jump into my presentation. So these are some images taken from the pageant, the prelim that I had won. When you do a prelim, you go through a talent portion and a private interview, an onstage section, and then evening gown, so that's what that is there. So the Kentucky Clean Water Project is what I chose to be my platform. When you do the Miss America organization, they require that you have a platform that you create of your own. I was raised, growing up, going to Ocean Isle Beach, where I was with my grandparents, and so I've always had a passion for the ocean. So when it came to creating my platform, I knew I wanted it to be centered around the ocean. But of course, we live in Kentucky with no ocean, so the whole thing is keeping the oceans clean even from here in Kentucky. So those are my two ducks, George and Sunny. I have a pond in my backyard, and often we'll get some fishers in the backyard. And twice now, we, my dad, had to remove hooks from both of my ducks because of people leaving their fishing memorabilia in the yard. So it was extremely disheartening to know that people were leaving their trash, and so that was another thing that inspired me to kind of promote keeping our communities clean. So this is something that I put on social media when I was kind of explaining what my mission was to members of the community. It's essentially saying that even though we are landlocked, we still have lots of pollution, and it all ends up in the ocean one way or another, so why not cut it off by the source? So community cleanups, things like that, keeping our communities clean would then keep our shit clean. So with that being said, I've done a lot of community networking. This is my friend Jenna, who helped me go to 22 businesses in Florence looking for donations for the cleanup event that I did. I had a little incentive where whoever collected most trash would receive a prize basket, and the prize basket was composed of donations from Florence businesses. So that was the flyer that I had. So this was an event that Victoria invited me to. It was the Spring into All Is Health Care, just one of the little community events that I went to and promoted my platform at. It was a grand time. That's me with the colon cane right there. I did some school visits, so these were a ton of fun for me. I love kids. So I got up in front of the students, and I had a presentation for them. I was able to talk to them about how they can keep their communities clean, and of course, it was a color sheet of what was her favorite thing about the ocean, and we talked about how remembering my old friends, picking up their litter. It's always great to be able to talk to them. So those were a ton of fun. I was at the City of Florence Easter egg hunt. That was hectic. I had never been before, and there was quite the crowd. I passed out a lot of my flyers there, which was a great, great way for me to spread the event for residents. And community partnerships. So with going to the businesses, Zombrero was a huge help to me. They jumped at this community event, and they fed me, we chatted, and they donated some coupons for all of the participants. They were super, super helpful. Their employees even came to the community cleanup event that I did. It was a ton of fun. I'm very grateful to have met them. And the other two images are the prize baskets that I had at the two-day event. So this is the cleanup event. It took place on April 22 and 23 on Mall Road. It was a two-day event. One of the days was on Earth Day, which was awesome, because I was able to do something great on Earth Day for the earth. So that was the first day. As you can see, all this back to trash that we collected. And then the second day, too, with the two days combined, we collected 161 pounds of trash from Mall Road. And let me tell you, there was much more to be collected. So I can't wait to get back out there, get another group together to do some more cleanups. So 161 pounds of trash in four hours, that's what we did. Super proud of my group. So what's next? I would love to do some annual cleanups. It was pretty hard for me to spread the word on this. I didn't get as big a group as I would like, but I'm grateful for those that did show up. I think that we could do a lot better if we were able to spread this, if I had some help to spread it a bit more. Furthering the research, you know, just finding out more things about our community and what I can do, where the most trash is. Mall Road was what first came to mind, but I know there's some other places that have a lot of litter that I could use to clean up. And then Miss Kentucky's sponsorship organization, so I have Miss Kentucky in June. All right. Thank you, guys, again, for letting me speak with you. Do you guys have any questions, anything to ask?
I just want to clarify. I live in the city of Florence.
I do, so.
And you have ducks.
Well, so I actually just moved out after I graduated from my parents' house. So I lived in Hebron a month ago, and then me and my boyfriend just got an apartment in the city of Florence. So those are in Hebron. All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck, yeah. It's exciting. And we can all do better to keep our water clean, keep trash picked up. So thank you for that reminder. And next, we have a presentation. It's called For Family by Family. It's the first unit of Florence Kentucky Juneteenth event, and Sienna Thompson, Dushayne Thompson. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Sienna Thompson, for Family by Family, and I was coming to give you an update from the last meeting that we was at. We will be having, help us celebrate that freedom experience of our celebration. The celebration will entitle a variety of cuisine, food, different cultural backgrounds, music, educational spirit, a very family, fun, free event. And what we would, I sent you all of you guys a packet in there, and also for the parade, we was in the parade, and we made it so friendly for the whole entire community to come out. There is a QR code that is, you can scan on there so they can know entitled the event. The first beginning of the ceremony is going to start at the Florence First Baptist African American Church on Shelby Street. So we're going to be honoring the church, and the Kentucky Historical Society will be there in Louisville. Also, then after we leave from there, we're going to continue on the celebration at the Florence, at the Florence Stringtown Park, and we're going to have vendors there. There's going to be games there. Everything will be free of charge for every family, any background, anything that you would need, also resources, education. We have healthcare coming. We have the mammography. We have UK that may be stopping by there, but it's just a family resourceful event for our Boone County area and in celebration of Juneteenth. So thank you for letting me come in and speak to you, and you can read the packets. If you have any questions for me, please let me know.
I just want to clarify, the packet said 21 Gerard Street.
Yes, that is where it's located at. And it's the First African American Church, and for the Kentucky Historical Society, to be coming down and to talk about that and do the research. That is very wonderful, especially we have the historical site here in Florence, Kentucky. Any more questions?
And then, Erica, I hate to ask, but what's the condition of Stringtown? What is our projection for the playground for that day? I know we're having some warranty replacement of the playground surface.
That's correct. I mean, we're hopeful that it'll be completed by then. But I don't want to come out and say that it will. We're waiting on the product, so. It's just that the playground is, I hate it all right now.
And in Louisville, I just thought if it was still there, if it's just in case, I brought like some family other stuff to put over to the side, just to make sure of that, and make sure that we didn't have the whole community come out still. Even if the park is not there, we still want to get our resources out there and the education and the research. I mean, you guys are our family. That's what For Family by Family stands for. Family, community, resources. So we definitely want to get all our local businesses, nonprofits down there, so they can at least have that. And I did line up, just like we said, I did line up some other communities out there. Like we do have still the cornhole. We're going to use access to that. We still have the volleyball court. We can still use that. And then at least make it a resourceful event and an educational event.
How late do you think it'll go that day?
5:30.
5:30, okay.
We'll be out there by 6 o'clock.
Perfect.
I just want to say that I'm so excited that you are coming and doing something to celebrate Juneteenth in the city of Florence. I think this is the first time that we've celebrated this holiday in Florence.
It's a new holiday.
Yeah, I'm so excited. Thank you so much for putting this together.
Ms. Thompson, you'll see me out there at the, you'll see me out there at the activities. I'm going to represent the city that day, and I'm happy to work with you when we get started.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is discussion, a possible action of a zoning text amendment related to household agriculture and household pets, and I'd like to call upon Josh Hunt.
Yep, so don't worry about it. And I'm sure council was receiving the memos that I've issued, and just happy to answer any questions as you may. I guess what we're discussing tonight is do we want to, or do you want to amend the zoning text and the definition as it relates to household agriculture in the city of Florence? So I know my memo was a couple pages, had a lot of details in there. Happy to answer any questions you may have as it relates to the zoning aspect of this.
And this was a subject that was, I guess, just went through the county planning commission. There was text written specifying definitions of what agriculture is, and so what we would need here would be to see if there's consensus to go through that long-range process that would probably take about nine months if there was any interest in council. And so just wanted to put that out there and see what council's desires.
Do you need a motion that we should need to discuss it, or no?
The motion would be, I mean, we can discuss it, but we would need to know if you are interested in going through a long-range planning commission study to change the text.
And that's a very involved process, and it impacts many different parts of the zoning codes. If you don't know exactly what motion, you have any questions about the specific zoning texts, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So do you need us to say yes, we'd like to discuss it?
Can you bring your microphone a little closer?
So we just need to say yes, we'd like to discuss it?
We are discussing it, so we just need to know if there's enough interest to make the recommendation to the planning commission to amend the text.
So we need to, so.
So if you want to discuss, if there's anything you want to say.
So I have some things I prepared. Can I add?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So just allow me to get through these. Here's the way I look at it. And thank you, Angie, for coming to multiple meetings and giving us information. I had no idea before you started coming about urban hens and how, and all the benefits about them. At the same time, I do appreciate that a lot of people do not want to live next to urban hens. And what I, what I really like about the thing you presented to us and how other cities have done it is they've set up guidelines so that if someone doesn't want to live next to urban hens, they can opt not to. Like Erling, I think Elsmere has a process where they can actually get permission, they have to get permission from everyone connected to them, and before we start this. So here's my conclusion. Basically, I trust the city, the citizens of Florence, to keep urban hens responsibly. I trust that if someone wants to take the time to file for a permit, buy a coop, and obligate themselves to care for hens, I trust them to do so with pride. I trust that they will keep the chickens' home clean, just like we already trust those people, the same people with keeping dogs and cats and their homes clean. I trust that the policies of a separate requirement, consent from adjoining neighbors, and a limit on how many hens a person can have can ensure hens in our community will be a welcome addition. I respect property rights, lifestyle choices of all residents. If someone wants to add chickens to their family, I respect that choice. Chickens have been known to be support animals. Caring for animals can result in a positive benefit for both the caretaker and the creature being cared for. Who are we to impede on a family's right to live a sustainable lifestyle? We shouldn't force people to buy eggs from a grocery store instead of enjoying organic eggs from their backyard. The ability to keep hens for eggs alleviates the cost of inflation. The current ordinance disproportionately hurts lower-income residents and exacerbates food insecurity. Florence is a wealthy city, and we should do everything we can to ensure that nobody goes hungry. I hope that the other council members will also decide to respect and trust our residents.
I agree. I'd like to discuss it more. I'm open to hearing more from what exactly that looks like. When we change the text of the ordinance, how does it, what does it do, like how is it more complicated? I need to understand more, you know?
In the memo that I laid out, I think the first thing you have to consider is if you allow one type of farm animal, and chickens are farm animals, it's agricultural abuse in a property that is in a suburban residential. In my opinion, talking with our legal, it's a slippery slope of if you allow one animal, why not allow ducks? Why not allow beehives? Why not allow pigs? And you get into that. And some of the other cities or ordinances that they reference, that, you know, I don't believe it's in the best interest of that city to pass ordinances like that. We're a little bit different, because our zoning regulations specifically do not allow any type of farm animals within residentially zone community. I certainly didn't go through and research every city in the northern Kentucky and what their zoning text is. Kent County specifically has 17 different zoning codes. But I can tell you within Bend County, you have to amend the text. And so the first issue is the definition of farm animals, which we worked over a year on with the planning commission to establish. And that was based off of the court recommendation and the lawsuit that we were in for multiple years as related to chickens. And then you get into accessory use structures and different building materials, inappropriate setbacks. There's a whole gamut of things that we have to consider when allowing chickens, as by definition, and then also accessory structures, which could be chicken runs or chicken groups.
Any other discussion?
I want to say that I have faith that you guys can handle that, that legal can handle it, that zoning planning can do it. I think that when this ordinance was passed to begin with, it was, tell me if I'm wrong, it was during COVID. So from my understanding, a lot of people didn't realize it was being passed. So I think right now we have citizens asking for something, and we should do everything we can to keep our citizens happy.
I hear you.
And if, as far as it being a slippery slope, then okay. So if someone comes here and they say, I want to be a beekeeper, then we, we're getting paid very well to do this job. We can take the time to listen to their needs and see what we can do to facilitate their desires. Right now, we have people asking for chickens. We, you know, I've done a lot of, you know, research, and it seems very, like a very reasonable request.
If you're allergic to bees, would you want to live next to somebody with beehives?
We're not talking about bees. I'm just saying that if someone comes with bees, then we can, we can research it, we can discuss it, because that's what we're here to do. We're here to listen to the people living in the city and, and, and consider what they want. So right now, they're asking us to consider hens.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
I would say that the issue with chickens started long before COVID. This city was involved in a lawsuit because our definition of household pet was not strong enough. It didn't specifically state chickens, or hens, or whatever you want to call them. It was a very lengthy process that we went through. We had, it was a court issue. We were in court over this issue. It has been looked at up one side and down the other. It's been discussed repeatedly. It's only, it took over a year to come up with the zoning text that we currently have that was approved in 2021. I think that that's fairly recent. We had very few people that I'm aware of that ever expressed any interest in having hens or chickens in their yards throughout that entire process, correct me if I'm wrong. I just, I understand what Angie's saying. I understand what folks are saying. I do. But the decisions that we make have to consider the entire community. It's not just what a couple of people want. It's what is best for the entire community. Josh, how many homeowners associations do we have about?
I think we're at 40, somewhere in there. We're around a few of those right now.
All right, so around 40 neighborhood associations that I'm going to go out on limb here and say, none of them will commit chickens.
Which is fine.
But that's not really the whole city, then. We're not really looking at what everyone, what's best for everyone in the community. We're only looking at, then, what's best for the people who don't have a homeowners association.
Well, to that point, though, I think that actually benefits looking at this further, because if there's 40 HOAs in the city and the HOAs wouldn't allow it, we're not talking about a whole lot of people here that would be affected. I mean, the HOA, I know my HOA would never allow it. But I would think, you know, if you don't live in an HOA, if you, if you choose to live in an HOA, you're choosing to live in an HOA for a reason, because you don't want to live next to chickens. But if you garden in an HOA, why not have that freedom to be able to have that? I mean, it's just like saying you're not allowed to grow sunflowers because they're eyesore, or you know what I mean? Like, an HOA would never allow me to have a garden in my front yard, but that's why I live in an HOA, because I lived in a neighborhood that was not an HOA, and we decided that we liked the lifestyle of HOA, but that's my personal decision. So I don't know why we would be open to helping those that don't have an HOA cracking down on things and let them live, you know?
Well, there's also, on the opposite side of that, there's also people that can't afford to live in HOA community that do not want to live next to chickens, and how we protect them.
Well, that's why we have the, we can make, write the ordinance how we want it. So that person can say, no, I don't want my neighbor to have a chicken, and then a neighbor can't have a chicken. It's not.
That's not how the zoning works.
Well, that's how it works in Elsmere, so why can't it work like that here?
Right now, you have to find the facts. You legally deny an application. It can't be based on the fact you don't like the fact that your neighbor has chickens.
Well, the board of adjustments just denied a short-term rental, because the neighbors didn't want to have.
Wholeheartedly did not agree.
That's another subject. But so Erlinger's ordinance was under their nuisance ordinance, so it's a different text. So it is not apples to apples.
Point being, they figured it out. We can figure it out. There's not that many people that are going to want to take on responsibility to chickens. It sounds pretty complicated. I know that that's not something I would be able to handle on a daily basis. So I think that we should move forward and figure out how to facilitate the citizens of our city that want to have chickens. I don't think this is that complicated, and I don't think that we should be telling people what they can and can't do in their backyard, what if the neighbors agree.
I think Josh did a great job with these two documents, trying to explain it, to go over it, and it sounds like I think we should just have a vote on it.
Anyone else?
If somebody has challenged for board of adjustments, may I say something? I actually won my case, and it was very clear. I've gone in front of the door of adjustments for Boone County.
Board of adj, so, can you just a second? Board of adjustments would not be able to, would not rule on this matter. They might rule on other matters, but they would not rule on this matter. So that's, that could be code enforcement if you were cited. So that's something different.
Went through, appealed, and it was, I can, I can speak to, I got a couple, I got 200 households' signatures in support, and the neighborhood helped me raise $2,000 to go and appeal this.
Well, let's, we're going to keep our discussion on this issue right here that doesn't involve code enforcement at this point. So if we, we can have some comments, but please limit them to two minutes per person. And because this is a zoning issue, we do not need to hear about the health benefits or the disease, diseases, or the, those issues are not applicable to the discussion that we're talking about, because I know, I have a nephew, and I've said this, I have a nephew who's can, you know, he, he has chickens. He loves his chickens. They're, they're, you know, his family, they raise their chickens, and they really tout the, the health benefits. I'm not here to dispute for or against the health benefits of, of eggs, or chickens, or poultry, and those kinds of things. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the zoning of this. So if someone does want to come forward, again, limited to two minutes, and if comments do become repetitive, we would ask that you not repeat and repeat and repeat, and that you be respectful of everyone's time.
May I go first?
I think the gentleman back here was first.
No, please, no, please.
So like I said, I was cited. It started out as.
You need to state, state your name for the record, please, and where you live.
Jacob Smith, 6772 in the law court, so I'm in S.R. one, and outside of the city of Florence, and familiar with the zoning rules. I was cited. It started out as a COVID project, and then I was cited for having chickens about a year later. The code, in many different places, it could have been back and forth, going on household and outdoor and everything. Structures even has coops in it. The only language of your side is except for in the city of Florence. Now, I believe that that judge, that change in that language was after the Hengehold case. If you read the Hengehold case, the circuit court comments on, the zoning laws are so arbitrary that they can't be, they can't be defined, there's no definition to them. So therefore, they're unconstitutional. This is straight, straight from the circuit court judge's comments.
So just, just to back up, so Josh might be able to speak to this better, but I'll try to synopsis this. That is the crux of the matter. It's exactly the Hengehold case, and exactly because of that, the process was followed. It was public hearing and handled through the planning commission, and now we have a new text. So what you're talking about previously may be true, but now that we have the zone text in place, I don't think it's the same applicability to what you're talking about. So it's changed. So, and who cited you if you don't live in the city of Florence? I mean, is it, was it a county officer?
It was a county officer.
Okay, so we have no jurisdiction over anything with the county, and I can't comment on anything with the county.
I understand that. As I was stating before, I had gone around, and I started with just my general, you know, policy, expanded out through the whole neighborhoods. I gave over 200 signatures in support, just my neighborhood. It's, people had given their own money to raise about $2,000 to help me come up with a $750 fee, and.
But this was a county fee, as you're talking about?
This was a county fee, yes. But just, the point is, is that people are not so against having chickens. It's like, oh, there's not this huge public outcry. I don't want to live next to chickens. I understand an HOA. You live in an HOA because you want these strict set of rules for cookie cutter houses, and that's fine. If you want to live in that, that's great. And to Len's point, you know, if you don't live in an HOA, you know, then there needs to be some, some work done. So how much do I know about that? How much do you have any questions or thoughts on my case or? I mean, there are sixteen families in there who have chickens and know what it's like.
Again, that's outside our jurisdiction.
Angela Kewell, you guys know me, I'm sure. And I'm not gonna go into a bunch of stuff.
Can you put her back down, please?
Yeah, I'm not gonna go into a whole bunch that I have in previous, but if we are gonna talk about this, the ordinance and the text being changed because of the Hengehold family, they had forty-eight chickens and they were free ranging. I absolutely understand why the text wanted to be changed so that pens were considered informants. I truly, I can understand that, I actually, I can. But what I do not understand is how we cannot change the ordinance or the structure or the zoning to allow six hens in a runner. Not only that, it's the point behind it too, is that when all of this was taking place, it was right when we're in the midst of COVID, people were scared about it in their homes. I'm sure you guys saw on your website, I'm sure that it was in a newspaper telling us that there was a hearing, how many people showed up to that hearing? Probably zero. How many people are here today? Just today, because I've advocated for a little bit amongst my community. I mean, to pass an ordinance during a time when we're scared and food are off the shelves and we don't have access to be able to grow our food, to have, you know, all of these amenities, to now come to you today and say, okay, we're past this, what if we come up against another pandemic? What if you come up against another situation like this? Why should I be denied the right to have six hens that I take care of meticulously to be able to provide food for my family, for my community? It wouldn't just be for me and my family, if something were to happen, I have a whole street I can take care of. I just don't understand why it was pushed through so quickly back in 2020. I know it was 2021 when it was officially put into text, I think November fourth was the public hearing, and it was January twenty-first that it was actually voted upon. Again, during a time when not many people were out and about because we were during a pandemic. So I'll leave it short and sweet and say that I think that it needs to be left open for discussion, I think that there's a lot more that can be discussed about it, I think that a lot of our community would benefit from it, I believe that it doesn't lower property value. And there's just a lot of benefits, I'm not gonna be the dead worst, like you asked me not to, and I'll leave it there, but the biggest thing is that as an American, I feel also I should have the freedom, I pay taxes, I should be able to have the freedom to have six hens in my backyard and a coop and a runner that I take care of, and I will be good at that, so thank you for your time.
Andrew, do you have an address for the record, please?
Naomi Lee, seven sixty-two B. Stride, right by Rice House Street.
Yeah, you need to bring the microphone up. There you go.
We, the people of the United States of America, who ordain and declare that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Let's look at that, pursuit of happiness, that means you are free to follow your bliss. If you want to go out dressed like a dinosaur, you have that right. If you want to raise chickens on your property that you own that's not in an HOA, you should have that right. This is not just about chickens, this is about government overreach. Our founding fathers thought the reason they separated from England was so they could have the right of property and to do what they wanted on their property. And the city of Florence is overstepping that boundary with this. You have no right to tell people what they can and cannot do on their own property. The city is not an HOA, I don't live on an HOA, Angie does not live on an HOA. And people who have chosen not to live on HOA, like I do, is because we don't want to be bound by those rules. We want the right to make our own decisions about what we do in our own backyards. This is unacceptable, and you can't just assume, you cannot treat the city like it is one big HOA, because it is not. And by putting in these regulations, you're stepping on our property rights to do what we want on our own property, okay? If I, if I want to paint my door neon green, I should be able to do that. Now, will I? No, because that would be weird. But this is the whole point, okay? The city doesn't have the right to be telling people what they can do on their own property. Thank you.
I just have one thing to say. My name's Andrew K. Wong, Angie's husband. I live at twenty-two Ridge Avenue, and I know that she talked to the code enforcer for, was it Erlinger or Elsmere? And he said that he had in the last nine months, I think it was, he had two complaints, and it was because residents had roosters.
They thought were chickens, they ended up being chickens.
So they had, they got rid of them and weren't fined or anything like that. So I know that that's one issue that, you know, you were arguing, your neighbor had chickens and they have had zero complaints.
Thank you.
This is my first time doing this, my name is Carla Alonso, I live in one six four Meadow Creek Drive in Florence. I just recently met Angie and we were talking about this situation. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, we just on, yesterday celebrated Memorial Day. And we have to keep in mind that the servicemen gave their lives for us during combat, or even after combat, once they were here at home. Their work and their, their sacrifice was for us to have freedom. And I don't live in an HOA, I don't ever want to live in an HOA because I like my freedom. Whoever wants to live in an HOA, like they said, it was great, that's, that's what they want, and that's it. But when a person wants to have the freedom to have a certain amount of chickens with, you know, specifics on how many chickens, you know, what the requiring feet of where the chickens are gonna be from the running, if, 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 you know, a backyard or specific length or whatever maybe is required, I think that can be done. I understand that you guys are saying that it takes a while, that's understandable knowing that you guys have other things to take care of. At the same time, I believe that that shouldn't be a thing that should stop you guys from doing this, because even in the military, we have a lot of things that take a long time to complete a mission, and we still complete the mission even if it takes that time. I believe you as elected officials, I worry with many of you, because I believe you guys were going to, you know, make, make positive change in the city, and I believe you. So, you know, I understand the, you know, development director and the zonings and all that stuff makes it seem so much difficult, and you guys just passed, you know, a new ordinance not long ago, I don't think that should be a reason to stop. I mean, we have so many other things in the military that we have to go through, you know, to get to mission, but we still get it done for the benefits of our service members, our country, our, our, our servants, out in the Marine Corps, our mission has to get done. I believe that ignoring the request of, of the citizens will cast a negative light in, in the council. And, 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 you know, the business community development director and the whole, you know, zoning people as well. If, you know, you want to discuss it more, I think it's a great opportunity to show the citizens of this, of this great city that you will be able to do this work for the benefit of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on council? David?
First of all, I'll thank you all for coming tonight. Some of your points I agree, some of them I don't agree. But I want, how many people have lived in Florence over forty years? Who? So when you moved to Florence, you moved it for one reason, Florence offered you a lot. We owe, we owe to our residents that live in Florence, whether they live in... Dilcras are far afield, everywhere, we owe something to them. But at the same time, you owe your obligation to the laws that have been passed in this city. Some of them are harsh, some of them you don't like, I don't like some of them, but it's the best for the city. If we did not have this kind of ordinance, do you think people were going to move into Florence next to a two hundred thousand dollar house and you see dogs running around, you see chickens, you see donkeys? I'm not far afield, but it does happen. These rules have to be enforced because I don't want to live next to somebody that I, that you're a donkey or I hear chickens or a dog running around in their yard. The latest set about the property, we do have a right. If we did this, we'd be a chaotic country, Boone County, and the city of Florence. I support what we did back in 2020, I support it now because it is the only reasonable right thing to do, that's my opinion.
Gary, did you say?
I guess we discussed, we voted, right?
So you're making a motion that we do...
Did you make a motion that she wanted to support, correct?
Did you make a motion? I don't remember if you made a motion or just made a statement.
I'm just clarifying procedure, I'm sorry.
I, I do want to, I would like to... My name is Nancy Forman, I live at twenty-four Ridge. I don't understand how, when this was originally passed in 2020, there were zero people to participate in anything. A lot of people didn't know, I understand that it's supposed to be made public, by the website, invited recorder, some people just don't get those things. I love the recorder, but it never was delivered to my house, I had to walk to other neighborhoods to pay it up. I don't know how we can make, how you can have a vote tonight on something that needs to be discussed further. I understand Josh's position, and what, what is it that Josh provided to you guys today that wasn't attached to the agenda? Something that we could have read, would it have mattered, would it have made a difference to us? We did not see that, you've mentioned it multiple times that you've read that, what, what was in that?
Basically the same thing that you and I discussed a few weeks ago, just gotta write a form out.
Shouldn't everybody be able to see that though before a meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, you could do an open record request, absolutely.
Okay, if you do an open record request, I get it three days after the meeting and I can't discuss it. If I don't know it's going to be discussed, I can't do an open record request. So it's a kind of catchphrase, that, that doesn't matter, but I just don't understand how we can, how you can vote on something without more discussion.
Well, I just want to clarify from council because I'm not voting. We have discussed this issue at length, we did, and it was longer than a period of, from November to January, it was...
Yeah, I would call it three years if you want, I would say, I don't want to say it was the most publicized thing that we've ever passed here, but it was in...
Multiple news stories, multiple...
Articles, lawsuits, I can't think of anything more publicized that we passed over a three or four-year period, discussed that multiple means. I can't remember anything beyond that outside of how much it's in the newspaper at times.
And I do understand that situation, and I believe like Angie said, I think that's totally different. And I, and I understand your point about the text amendment, that it is very long and cumbersome, but why does it have to be a text amendment? Why can't it be a special...
Because we pursued, and it required us to, to rectify the suit, we had to pass that.
Alright, so you can't...
So anything from now on has to go through the same process.
Correct. You cannot pass an ordinance that contradicts zoning text.
We cannot be Erlinger, we can't do what Erlinger did.
Alright, that's, that's actually what I meant.
They have, their ordinance is under, their provisions under their nuisance ordinance, I just talked to their mayor today, so it's a different set.
Alright, alright. So do we have availability to see Josh's written document outside of open records?
You mean, you can see, everything that we've discussed, I mean, I, you do have to do an open record request to get it.
So how, in the future, how will you be able to provide that to someone before the meeting?
It won't be provided until the week after council because it is for councils, it's information for councils, specifically addressed to council.
Okay, and because it's specifically addressed to council, the public's not ready until after a vote?
Until it's on the agenda, we discuss it.
Okay. And why can't we have transparency? I mean, that's the biggest thing, I'm sorry about that.
We, it's KRS requirements, this is how we, this is what we have to do, we didn't, we don't have these, these are Kentucky revised statute, so if you have an issue with that, I would say that maybe you need to speak with your sacred persons.
It seems that the language would change after an extreme event, or an argument with somebody that had forty chickens, I get...
I, I don't remember the amount of chickens, and I don't think it was forty.
They had forty chickens, and then you lost that argument, you lost that, you lost that case, and then you changed the language on it. Like, nobody's asking to have forty chickens, they're like, no, six. And it's just, let's keep that in mind, that you're, you're making, you're, you're fighting against changing the code.
So do we have, do we have any emotion? One way or the other?
Can we vote on it? I'm, I'm voting on it.
What is your motion?
I'm, let's vote, let's do it.
Vote on what?
On, on continuing to work on amending everything for the chickens. Working, I understand that we, we choose to agree or disagree that we need to move forward with coming up with a good ordinance or adjustment of the current zoning laws to allow people to have six chickens in the city.
Okay, so let me, let me just make, make sure this is clear for the note taker who's filling in for our clerk who's on vacation. Your motion is to direct the city to request the planning commission review the zoning text with regard to household agriculture. Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. So just to be clear, we say yes because we want to vote... Request the planning commission review a zoning text amendment to revise household agriculture. And if you vote no, that means you want it to just stay the way it is.
Yeah.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
Mrs. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
No.
Mrs. Kimber?
Yes.
Mrs. Wingo?
No.
Mr. Osborne?
No.
Motion failed to board.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. We have, Florence Aquatic Center is open, boy, it was packed yesterday. We did do some giveaways on Saturday morning for those who came. And for information regarding membership, hours of operation have passed, please call eight five nine six four seven forty-six nineteen, or you can always email aquatics@florence-ky.gov. Legacy Living in Florence at located eighty-two fifty Gunpowder Road will celebrate their one-year celebration on Tuesday, June sixth. They will have a ribbon cutting and the city will present them with a proclamation at three P. M., all are invited to present. In honor of Flag Day on Wednesday, June fourteenth, the city will display American flagings on U. A. Boulevard. Flag Day commemorates the adoption of the Stars and Stripes as the official flag of the United States, and I encourage everyone to display the American flag on June fourteenth.
Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention all the flag that we had around the city building yesterday for our parade and our ceremony. Those there by the group that accompanies services for deceased service people, and anytime that happens, they... And anytime that happens, they put those flags up and allows the people to come and see them, and they actually protect the site while the funeral is going on.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Really a nice thing to see yesterday.
Speaking of the Memorial Day parade and program, just wanted to, hats off to Victoria and the rest of the team there that she led. Victoria played in the program. I think it was our biggest yet.
Yes.
And lots of, lots of biggest participation in floats, and biggest participation in crowd, we believe. And my, my fun time was to have Twister and Y'all Star and Gapper from the Reds all on my float, so I thought that was awesome. I think the kids really loved it. It was a good time. And then the program, I think, was really a good program, and one of the things that we haven't really done before, and we, we able, were able to pull off, is all, when all the service members came up front, we got a picture of all the veterans that were there that day, and I think that's, was just a really neat tribute to the veterans that day. Our first summer concert series is going to be held Friday, June 16th, at the Florence Mall. Speaking of Victoria, she's been working on this as well, Angie Anna, and her assistant there. The concert will feature the opening act by a brother sister duo called Tybo. And then the headlining act, it's a country dynamic cover band. They, they making their mark on the country music scene with perfect blend of high energy and soulful sounds. It's east of Boston. The event will be held from 6:00 PM till 10:00 PM. And our summer concert series is presented by Heritage Bank. They are our title sponsor, and we are thrilled that they have stepped up this year to offset the cost on this event, as well as our event sponsors, VIOX and VIOX, our civil engineers, Shepherd Insurance, Dallas and Turner, Attorneys at Law, the Florence Mall, Mitchell Insurance, and the Air Force. And St. Elizabeth, I can't forget St. Elizabeth. The van, the vans are going to be all sponsored by St. Elizabeth as well, so it's going to be an awesome event. It's the first of our three concert series. We'll have another concert in August and another one in September. And we will have food vendors from Dreamy Web, Cone Ice, La Torta Loca, Eddie's Barbecue, Fat Dave's, and Poseidon Pizza, just to name a few. So that is all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I say one more thing? I'm really sorry.
We are, we are on a special meeting, so we have to stick to the agenda. Is it on?
I just wanted to ask one question.
Okay.
I want to know if there's anything further that Angie can do, because six people just made decisions for the whole city of Florence, correct? Is that what just happened in this vote? Six people said the city of Florence does not want chickens, hens in their yard. Is that correct?
Typically, the city council is voted by the citizens, and they make all decisions for the city. So this decision or any other decision, that's how, that's how it works. Or unless there's a board or commission that is assigned to, to do that.
And that's without any outreach to the constituents?
I, I can't speak to, I'm sure that they've had conversations with constituents. I don't make the assumption that they haven't. I, I don't want to make the assumption that they haven't spoke to constituents.
I should have made that clear for this matter in particular.
I, I would not make the assumption that they have not spoke to constituents, no.
I just wanted to see if that's how it works. All right, thank you.
All right, all in, motion to adjourn? Mr. Nguyen? Second, Ms. Kimber? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.